And automatic defibrillator here if by chance we need it. With that, I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Borgerson. And Mr. Chair.
Here.
And Commissioner Borgerson, Craft, and Boyle are absent.
Item A is approval of the minutes for the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. Item B, call for meeting and set Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, as the date for hearing on certified assessment and corrections.
Would move approval of A and B.
There's a motion to second. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to comment on any items not listed on the Board of Equalization's agendas today? Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item, uh, to resolutions. Item D, set the final, uh, 2016 real property valuation for all real property protests that are reviewed by the Douglas County Board of Equalization and referees and appraisers after the Supreme Court determination to add eight percent to the 2016 real property value of residential property in valuation group two. Catherine, just for the record, would you just set the stage for this for people that may not know? We're kind of taking a second bite at the apple just what this is.
Sure. This is in response to a Supreme Court order, um, which ended up reversing the Turk order to reduce properties in valuation area two, which was a segment in the northern part of the county, that, uh, reduced values by eight percent. So, we went through the typical process and allowed all properties that were changed and affected by this order the opportunity to protest. So, this concludes that protest period.
Okay. Thank you. With that, um, item E is approval of the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles and recommendations for approval, uh, by the Treasury. What's the will of the Board?
If there's no need for executive session, uh, I would move for approval of resolutions D, E, and adjournment of the Board of Equalization.
Set.
There's a motion to second. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Uh, yeah, just a quick question, um, Ms. Hall. The, a number of protests filed on that, uh, section of, uh, that we were just talking about was, I think, about 70. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and where are they in the process of being heard and disposed of?
They've been, all been reviewed by referees and the recommendations are outlined in the attachment for this item.
So, this is the final, uh, disposition of those
Correct.
properties.
Yes.
And that, that then closes out the year on a property tax evaluation of, of protests.
Correct. Once the Board takes action on this item, then, um, the jurisdiction would move on to Turk, we presume.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Voting yes?
I see him pushing, I see him pushing the yes button.
Uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh voting yes. Uh, motion passes. All Commissioners present also voting yes.
We will now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
And Commissioners Borgerson, Boyle, and Craft are absent.
Item one, minutes and claims, approval of the minutes of the Board's meeting held Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 26th, 2017. It's the will of the Board.
Would move approval of A and B.
Just, there's a motion to second. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Voting yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Uh, item two is the consent agenda. Um, we have 11 items and, um, if I can get a motion to second, I want to refer to the clerk to clear up an item.
Move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Just a second. Mr. Clerk, will you clarify item G eight?
Yes, on, uh, uh, item G eight, there's just a, um, some numbers missing on pages. It's, uh, the, if you looked at the attachment, it's like every other page is numbered and then at the very end, uh, it goes from page seven to nine and we, we contacted the Health Department and it should say, uh, page eight. So, there's not any pages missing, but we will number, after this is approved, we'll change page nine to page eight and then number all the, uh, blank pages.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I just have a couple of, um, questions on, uh, I guess this is G 11. It's approval of a lease agreement with Thorn Company LLC regarding rental space for the WIC clinic located at 735 North 120th Street. Dr. Poor. Thank you. It's my understanding that this, uh, lease on this particular space has been in place for, I don't know, five or 10 years?
Yeah.
And, um, it's being renewed, uh, for a term of a year?
You know, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's more than a year.
Okay. I, I, I think that's right. I think I talked, two, three years? Yeah. Um, I think, you know, we're, we're looking at a three-year renewal at $58,880 a year. And I don't know, I haven't toured this space. I'd be interested in looking at it, but, um, it might be, uh, something that, uh, we take a careful look at next time that it comes up for, uh, renewal to see if there possibly is another alternative, uh, space that we may own.
It's, it's a really good area out there on 120th and it's in a shopping center actually on the back side. So, people feel comfortable going there. So, it really has worked well for us, but I'm more than happy, uh, to use Cherry and look at some other property close by and see if we could get anything more reasonable or cheaper.
Very good.
I do think we invested some money there in the beginning to really make it look like a clinic when you walk in and have clinic rooms on the side. So, that will need to be considered at the same time.
Okay. Um, it indicates that it's grant-funded. What's the source of that?
It's WIC, uh, so women, infant, and children. That's all funded from the state.
Very good.
It's, it's a pass-through. Federal government funds the state. The state then provides us funding depending on the number of people that we see.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one other, uh, question and maybe this is for either Joe or I thought there was somebody here from the Treasurer's Office regarding J, resolution to approve demand for refunds in the amount of $276,000. Joe?
Yeah, I'm really, I believe all those
Refunds go through the Treasurer's Office, um, so, um, I can't really speak to it. Okay. Mr. Ash?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk, not to speak for the Treasurer's Office, but, uh, judging by the backup, it looks like most of them are Turk vouchers, which as I understand it, usually, um, it's, they've won their appeal at Turk and they're getting, uh, the money back for what they overpaid in taxes. One of them's for a Crestline LLC, is for a CAC. Not sure, but it's probably a similar situation where, uh, maybe after the taxes were paid for 2016, we approved a CAC that lowered that value for 2016. Now, we're just paying them back the taxes they overpaid.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. There's a motion to second on the floor.
Pardon me? Do you want to hold the grant? No. Okay.
Um, there's a motion to second. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Okay. Item three is record, uh, recognition and proclamations. We have three, uh, employees retiring. Jane McGinty, Cheryl Murray, and Doris J. Shulley. We want to wish them a happy retirement. And also, we have item D, a resolution declaring the week of September 25th through 30th, 2017, as the National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Is there a motion by the Board?
Would move approval of items A through D.
There's a motion to second. I see none of those employees here, so with that, um, please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Uh, item four, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens at this time that would like to comment on any matters that are not officially listed on the Douglas County Board of Commissioners' agenda? Again, are there any citizens? Seeing none, we'll go on to public hearing. Item A, holding of public hearing and approving bond resolution regarding the issuance by Douglas County, Nebraska of its revenue bond, Series 2017, in a principal amount not to exceed $5 million, the proceeds of which are to be loaned to the Autism Center of Nebraska, Inc., nonprofit 501(c)(3). Uh, we will now open the public hearing.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Steve Leix. I'm an attorney with the Q-Tac Rock Law Firm here in Omaha. I'm here today on behalf of the Autism Center of Nebraska, uh, who has made a request of the county to issue a revenue bond in the principal amount of not to exceed $5 million. Uh, we appeared before you last week to have a discussion with you all about, uh, the Autism Center and the purpose of the bond issue and requested to come back this week, uh, for you all to hold a public hearing as is required by both state law and federal tax code. Tax code requires that before a political subdivision such as the county can issue a tax exempt bond on behalf of a 501(c)(3), there has to be a public hearing. Uh, and following the public hearing, we will introduce a bond resolution pursuant to which, if so approved, uh, you would authorize the issuance of the bond to the Autism Center. I have with me today representatives of the Autism Center, uh, who would like to speak briefly on behalf of this. We also have Craig Jones from First National Capital Markets, which is acting as the placement agent of this bond. Gentlemen, would you like to?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Rene Ferdinand. I appeared last week. I'm the CEO for the Autism Center of Nebraska and I guess, uh, this is very important to us, getting this bond. It will help us, uh, refinance and, uh, certainly help with cash flow, given some other difficulties with some state funding. And, uh, you know, right now, we are serving about 180 individuals with autism in the Omaha metro area. We have 150 employees and another 40 contractors who are doing good work and this will help us continue it.
Any other comment from the public? I saw a blank. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just wanted to, uh, recap for the Board and public, um, the brief history of this worthy program. We have, uh, two issues today, one for $5 million for the, um, Autism, um, Center and one for $4.5 million for Outlook Nebraska, which I think we're going to hear shortly. And just a, an overview, I did some research on this out, after our discussion last week relative to our use of this program. And, um, since 1997, we have authorized the issuance of 392,576,000 of these bonds, um, for a wide variety of, um, entities. Initially, they were industrial development bonds, but as Mr. Leix pointed out, I think last week, that the authority for these have been widened in recent years to include the, um, 501(c)(3)'s that we're hearing about today and other, uh, qualified organizations. So, most recently, in the last, uh, two years, they have been used primarily for, well, uh, there was a 2015 issue for $16 million for a zoo facility at Henry Dorley Zoo. And then in 2015 and 16 and 17, uh, they were used for a variety of multifamily housing, uh, projects, um, in the county. And, you know, it seems to be a more and more utilized, uh, means of financing and, um, I think that's a good thing. I just, uh, am pointing out that with 392 million plus in bonds, most of which I think are still outstanding, um, it, uh, it seems to be a pretty robust means of financing, uh, projects throughout the county and I didn't know how aware people were of this financial tool, uh, but I wanted to have a little bit of discussion to give the public some idea of how widely, uh, used it is. Tom, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board? There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Duda. Uh, please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Item B, holding of public hearing and approving of a bond resolution regarding the issuance by Douglas County, Nebraska of its revenue bond, Series 2017, in the principal amount not to exceed $4,500,000, the proceeds of which are to be loaned to Outlook Nebraska, Inc., and Nebraska Nonprofit Corporation. Uh, we will now open the public meeting on this item.
Commissioners, again, my name is Steve Leix, uh, with Q-Tac Rock, bond counsel to the 501(c)(3) stars in this community. Um, again, we were here last week to speak with you all about the request by Outlook Nebraska that the county issue its revenue bond in the principal amount not to exceed $4.5 million. Uh, we have with me today representatives of Outlook Nebraska, Tim Hurley, the CFO. Uh, we also have representatives from UMB Bank, who will be the direct purchaser of this bond, um, as is the case with Outlook, with Autism Nebraska. This bond will be privately placed with a single purchaser. It will not be sold out into the public. We're here today to hold the public hearing as requested. Uh, Mr. Hurley, would you like to speak on behalf?
Uh, Tim Hurley, 4125 South 72nd Street, Outlook Nebraska. I'm the CFO and, and thank you for last week for allowing us to present and this week for, uh, voting on this issue. Again, we're the largest employer of the blind in Nebraska. We have two areas that we work on. One is employment and then one is, uh, education and training for the blind in our community. Most of this bond will go for new equipment that will sustain us well into the future, provide us more capacity. In all of our equipment, we add audio, um, technology to it so the blind can operate all of our manufacturing equipment. Almost every piece of our equipment has this audio on. So, again, thank you so much for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybo, any, any other public comment on this item? Seeing none. Uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh, is this for this or the last one?
No.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further public comment, we will close the public meeting. What's the will of the Board? Uh, motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Okay. You're done?
Commissioner Regent, if I may, did approval also approve the bond resolutions themselves or just closing the public hearing?
No, we did both.
Both. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Committees and discussions. Uh, item A, finance, uh, budget report. Commissioner Morgan? Thank you. We'll go on to item G. Uh, item one is the weekly personnel report and civil, um, service report. Uh, no items there. Item two is the legislative issues report. Anybody want to comment on any legislative issues? Seeing none. Item three, resolution and appro, approving the contract with EnRoute Coaching and Training Services LLC for Dan Embry to serve as facilitator for the Douglas County October 17th Strategic Planning Session. What's the will of the Board? Okay.
Strategic planning.
Commissioners, if I may, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, this is, uh, a resolution presented by Commissioner Borgerson. If you want to wait and hold off until she's back, that would be fine. It's not a, uh, traumatic story. This is in relation to the October 17th Strategic Planning Session, so we do have a little bit of time.
I'll move it. Second. Seeing no discuss, uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you gotta, is this, this time?
No, no. I was just gonna say, we could probably move on this.
Yeah. We have a motion to second. Uh, please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Okay. We have, uh, item four, which is approval of the increase to medical insurance premiums for 2018 planned year. Is somebody from HR here to discuss that? There you, Matt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Oberle, County Human Resources. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the increases.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, um, I was looking at the history of this going back a few years. I just have a, a couple of questions. So, the information that I've looked at indicates that we have, um, premium increases of the last, uh, one, two, three, four, five, four of the last five years. Is that right?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Okay. And, um, these are driven by what?
Medical prem, uh, excuse me, medical expenses that we, the plan actually incurs. So, uh, working with Aon, our consultant, they will project what our premium or what they expect our spend to be on the medical plan and then we plan the premiums based on that.
Okay. So, I'm looking at these projections going back to, uh, 2014 and, um, Aon projected, uh, at that time, uh, total cost of $27.2 million. Actual cost came in at $26.6 million and the premiums increased 9.4%. 2015, Aon projected, and they, their projection was 629,000 below actual cost. Um, Aon projected, uh, increases of 8.1% in 2015. They projected total cost of $29.1 million. Actual cost came in at $28.3 million, 753,000 below projections. 2016 premiums, no increase to the premium. Aon projected the total cost to be 29.9. Actual cost came in 30.5, which was 598 over projections. 2017 premiums increase projected was 10.2%. And Aon projected total cost of 33.5. Projected total cost came in at 30.5, $3 million under. And 2018 premiums increase projected 5.4%. That's what we're talking about today?
Uh, we're actually going to buy that premium increase down to 4% as we have done in the past, um, using some of the, the medical fund reserves, working with our finance director on that.
I see. Um, so, Aon projects total cost at 33.4, um, which would be, you know, approximately what they projected last year when we came in $3 million under. I guess a couple of questions. The one year when we did no, uh, increase in the premiums, uh, Aon projected 29.9, we actually spent, I guess, the actual cost was over that by half a million dollars. In the other years where the premium increases were significantly higher, the actual cost actually came in under the projected cost. So, uh, I guess it's a little counterintuitive. If, if our costs are coming in under and we're raising the premiums higher in those years than the costs that come in over, uh, explain to me how that, that works.
So, for 2014 premiums, we would have done the, this exercise in 2013, estimating that that's where it's going to come out. We believe we're going to spend more this year or the next year, excuse me, in medical expenses. And then it just happens that it came out underneath that. So, we're planning for a worst-case scenario, but happily surprised when it comes in a little bit under. But, uh, when you're looking at coming in half a million dollars under out of $35 million, that's a, that's a pretty close guess in my estimation.
Okay. So, last year's was off by over $3 million.
And that would be part of the changing carriers from United Healthcare to Blue Cross, Blue Shield. You know, we, again, it's, it's a guess on what our premium or what our actual expenses are going to be. And so, again, we want to prepare for spending more money as opposed to not having enough money to cover those costs.
I see. So, this is anticipated that under the new carrier, under Blue Cross rather than the United Health, um, that costs are going to be up by about 10%?
Um, not exactly. Uh, we're looking at about a 5% increase, uh, in, well, actually, it looks like it's going to remain about flat from what we had estimated this year. So, it, the actual expense, we'll, we'll have to wait and see where that actually comes out.
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm just doing some rough math here, but Aon projected total cost to be 33.5 million in 2017.
Correct.
Projected total cost will be 30 for a differential of three. And that's 10% differential on $30 million, right? Yeah. And the projected increased premium, 10.2%. So, uh, you know, I guess I have a little bit of a question of where does that come from? That, that increase in that year? And you're indicating that it was because we changed carriers.
Tracy Crowsey. I work for Aon Consulting, 11213 Davenport Street. Commissioner Kavanaugh, the 2017 premium equivalents were set using United Healthcare rates. So, looking at the experience of a 12-month period with United Healthcare, we had projected a 10.2% increase. Now, the county bought that down and only passed on a 9% increase to the employees. In looking at projecting for 2017, we did make that change of carriers from United Healthcare to Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Nebraska. And if you can recall, our claims discount analysis showed that there was a differential between the two of about two and a half or 3%. So, we built in 3% differential into your claims for worst-case scenario. The $30 million that's there saying projected total cost, again, we're only halfway through 2017, so I'm using the first six months of 17 and then projecting forward. So, that $30 million number might be 31, might be 32, but at this point in time of the year, we're at 15 and a half, so probably end up around 30 or 31. But that's the difference there. We accounted for claims with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Nebraska to be higher and it's not coming to fruition. The way that your guys' claims are running, it appears that the discount between United Healthcare and Blue Cross is similar.
Okay. So, then going to the 2018 projections, um, which is a premium increase projected was 5.4. Douglas County uses reserves and passes a 4% increase. That's what we're considering today.
Correct. A 4%.
Okay. The 4% is, is, just help me out here because I'm on a learning curve. The 4% is 5.4, but part of that 5.4 is being defrayed by a different funding source. Is that right?
Correct. We're using the reserves.
Okay. So, if we go back, um, over this period, you know, 2017, 2016, 2015, 2014, our premium increases, hmm, are, you know, factoring in a no-premium increase in 2016, um, are, 9.4, 8.1, 0, and 10.2. Is that, is that right? Am I reading that right?
Yes. In 2014, even though the premiums went up by 9.4%, there was a premium holiday given twice that year. So, in the month of June, employees paid no premium and in the month of July, employees paid no premium, coming out of the reserves in two different fiscal years. So, the impact to the employees wasn't really 9.4%.
Okay. How, how do premium holidays occur?
At that point in time, what Kathy Adair did was stopped any deductions from the employees' paychecks. So, for June, employees paid nothing for their health insurance and in July, they paid nothing for their health insurance. So, for June, employees paid nothing for their health insurance, and in July, they paid nothing for their health insurance.
Okay. But how does that happen? I mean, I wasn't on the board in 2014, so I'm not aware of the process by which you get a premium holiday.
It was decided because of the reserve, I think it was around $11 million at that point in time, that they were going to give a premium holiday. So, we increased the premiums by 9.4 and then gave those two months of premium holiday. Instead of passing on, let's say, a 7% increase and not giving any premium holiday.
I see. Then, do you recall what that premium holiday equaled in dollars?
Yes. About 3.3 million.
Now, this reserve that we're tapping into again, right? In this scenario in 2018?
Correct.
Okay. This reserve is billed up with what revenues? What goes into the reserve?
Premiums that the employees pay and premiums that Douglas County puts into the reserve.
Okay. And are those, over and above the actual premiums that we know we're going to pay, that we, that we charge, you know, a surcharge or whatever to build up a reserve? How does that, how does that occur?
I'd have to defer to Joe on the, on the reserve calculations.
Joe, can you help us out here?
Sure. It's fund, the medical insurance fund, and the source of revenue on that fund, as Tracy said, are the premium payments that both the county and the employees pay. They go into that fund, and then we pay claims against that fund. And so, on a monthly basis, I'm always tracking that reserve to see what, what level it is. I mean, the latest reserve as of September 11th this year, it was a little over 12 million. And, you know, when it starts to get, you know, above 11 million, there's room there, and that's when we come back on this premium strategy, that we use these excesses to bring down the premium. So, in these years, you've seen the trend that the actual claims paid have been less than the actuarial projection of what the premiums were supposed to be. And so, once we go through a year and have that positive variance, we take that positive amount, and that's what we use to credit back to lower the amount of premiums that employees in the county will pay the following year.
So, what we did in 2014 in the premium holidays, and what we're doing in this projected proposal with a offset of a 1.4% from the reserves to, to apply to the 5.4% projected premium increase, are those the same things in different forms?
Correct.
Yeah, yes. And we did that in 2014, we tried that, but when you do that, it has a lot, impacts payroll, and administratively, we found out it was, it created more issues and administrative work. So, after that, we said, well, I think from the county's perspective, in terms of administration and putting this in, it would be easier just to bring down the premium amount in the beginning of the year. And so, that's kind of why we switched. There was some key learnings when we did a premium holiday, that administratively, it caused some issues. So, that's, that's why we changed the method that we do, but we're trying to get at the same result, you're right.
I see. So, when we talk actual total costs in these scenarios, those are the claims for that year from our employees, right?
Claims and administration costs, correct.
Okay. And we have 2014, actual cost of 26 million, 2015, actual cost of 28 million, 2016, actual cost of 30 million, and we're projecting about the same cost for 2017, and we're projecting a 10% increase in actual cost for 2018. Am I reading that right?
The projected spend for 2017 was 33.5 million, but it looks that we're on trend right now to come in under that at 30.5.
Yeah, I'm reading the projected total cost at 30 million.
Correct.
Yeah. So, kind of the same for 16 and 17, pretty close. And then for 18, 33 million, albeit a projection, which would be a kind of a 10% bump, is that right? Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, what's the will of the board? There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes, all commissioners present voting yes.
Item five, approval of the resolution directing Aon to pursue a five-year contract with Discovery Benefits for FSA services for 2018.
Matt.
Thank you. Commissioners, we commissioned Aon to market our flexible spending arrangements services, and we came back with three potential vendors. Payflex are the current vendor, Connect Your Care, and also Discovery Benefits. Looking at the financials, Discovery Benefits should save us 20% over the course of two years on our administration fees. And having gone through finalist presentations, it sounds like Discovery Benefits will also offer more benefits to our members, the employees, and so my recommendation would be to pursue a contract with them.
With that said, any questions? Is there a motion to approve? Oh, sorry. Come on. I was waiting to then come in. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Okay. FSA Services.
Flexible Spending Account.
Okay.
Excuse me.
And for the listening audience, what is that?
Flexible Spending is, is something that our employees can use if they are on the PPO medical plan, and it allows you to put pre-tax dollars aside and spend that on medical expenses. And so, it, it's essentially a debit card that you can use for your medical expenses.
Okay. Who do we currently have administering this?
Payflex.
Okay. And the reason to switch from them to Discovery Benefits?
We can save 20% on our administration fees over the course of the two years, and then also Discovery Benefits has a few, offers a few things that Payflex does not. The ability to use the debit card for parking expenses that, and also dependent care expenses. So, it's an advantage for our employees to, to be able to use those, it's much more convenient for them to use that.
And the third vendor that bid on this?
Connect Your Care. We, they offer a larger savings, absolutely, but I don't feel like the service or the, I guess the benefits would match those of Discovery Benefits after listening to their, their finalist presentation.
And what's the difference between these two companies? Is it Connector Care and, and Discovery Benefits?
Yeah, they're, they're two totally separate companies, obviously, but they both offer the same services, but, and that's flexible spending administration, but Discovery Benefits offers things that Connect Your Care does not, and that's why I'm recommending it, like being able to use the debit card instead of a reimbursement for parking and, and dependent benefits.
I see. But the Connector Care bid itself was lower, you're saying?
Correct, absolutely.
So, you're saying this is the better bid?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You have approval.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners present voting yes.
Item six, approval of the resolution to enhance the wellness plan incentives for Plan Year 2018. Matt, third time's a charm.
Let's hope so. Good morning again, Commissioners. I've got a couple of presentations here, if I could. And I'm needing some technical assistance with this device over here. And actually, I think what we'll do, instead of looking at page one first, is we'll look at page two first. If you don't mind. So, Viveri is the company that we use to help administer our wellness program. And looking at the course of the last several years, our incentive is not quite up to the book of business that Viveri has. The average incentive is about $400. And so, looking ahead to 2018, the Plan Year 2018 being paid out in 2019, we wanted to exceed that goal to help boost our participation rates. And we're proposing a $500 well, premium reduction for employees paid out over the course of the year, and a $250 premium reduction for spouses for $750 total, again, being paid out over the course of the entire year, but each pay period. And so, if you look at page one, this shows our wellness participation as a percentage of the eligible population, so employees and their spouses that are covered on the medical plan. And quite truthfully, I'm a little perplexed at these numbers, based on the amount of benefit that they could receive. There doesn't seem to be a real rhyme or reason that it's attached, or, excuse me, participation does not correlate to an increase in the amount that we give for our wellness rewards. So, 2017, the year that we're currently in, I think that, that some folks had a bad taste in their mouth from the gift card that was this year's benefit being taxed, and so, we, we hope we can get over that, that negative perception. As a department, though, we are also looking at enhancing what we are doing to try to increase participation. We've got a Wellness Champion program that we are going to initiate. So, each department's going to have someone in it that's a Wellness Champion, that can promote the program, that can answer questions for new hires, and just help us out getting that ground, ground well support. So, we are going to enhance our communication, we want to make the plan better, we want everyone to participate. And so, we found that the biometric screening and the health assessment are where we really got bang for our buck. The biometric screening shows you right there on a piece of paper, hey, your cholesterol is 400, and you need to go see a doctor now, or you have something wrong with your blood pressure. So, those are the things that, those are immediate wins that we can do, somebody can act on those immediately and improve their health. So, that's what we're going to require for next year, as we have in the past years. But again, with some renewed commitment to communication and promoting the plan from within the county, this, this enhanced premium reduction should help with our participation, and that's, again, the main goal. Questions?
Seeing none, what's the will of the board? Is there a motion to approve? I move motion to approve. There's a motion to second, seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners present voting yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
And is there a need there? Okay. Marcos?
Need for executive session for litigation and collective bargaining. Negotiation.
We, there is a need for executive session, as I said, for litigation and collective bargaining, anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Second. Motion to second, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes, all commissioners present voting yes.